2023 public hearing in the absence of the secretary. I will call the road role. Member Fulham is absent. Member Neely?
Present.
Member Mutu?
Present.
Member Catalin Lonado?
Present.
Secretary Burke and Chair LaFaro is absent. Vice Chair is present. We do have a quorum. Could you please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just briefly advising the event of an emergency, kindly exit this room utilizing either of the two rear doors. Proceed to the main floor using either staircase and exit this building through the front or the side rear door. I will also announce that we will, we will be able to take public comment on the CVS application. However, the applicant requested an adjournment date till July. But if you're here to speak on CVS, we will take your comment. I know some of you showed up and want to be heard. So we do have notice, counsel?
We do.
Very good. And Craig, you're going to read it?
Please take notice that in accordance with local law number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, May 25th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to discuss site plan special exception application entitled CVS Hampton Bays. The application is for the conversion of a 14,886 square foot movie theater into a drugstore convenience store located in a 27,552 square foot building with additional retail uses on a 2.7 acre parcel located in the Village Business zoning district situated at 125 West Montauk Highway, Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-224-111.
Very good. Is anyone from CVS present? Please use a podium. Welcome. If you could print, yeah. Just sign in. State your name for the record. Jeff, do we know what determined date we have for CVS?
July 13.
July 13?
July 13.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Armentano. I'm an attorney with Farrell Fritz. We're actually here tonight, as you had stated, to seek an adjournment. As you are aware, CVS and the property owner are renegotiating the lease as it pertains to the cross-access agreement and the modifications to the site plan. So in light of that not being present or completed, the property owner had requested that this matter be adjourned at the date that the planning board chairmans decide. And, you know, we're here to obviously keep the comment period open, open the hearing, and then we'll be presenting our application at the next available date. But we're obviously here to take public comment, and we'll take consideration of that as well.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. That being said, it's, I think what you've heard is that there's possibly some changes across access to the site plan. This will be rescheduled for July 13th. But if those of you who are here and on Zoom wish to enter any comments, now would be the time, or you can come back on the 13th. Is there anyone who wishes to enter comments at this time? Yes, ma'am. On the left. Aye. Sure, you can distribute, yeah. And then use the podium, please.
Yes.
Thank you for seeing again.
Are you sure you mean that? Most people don't mean that when you see them. Okay, I am visually impaired, so, you know, just give me some leeway here. I want to make three points.
Just state your name.
Oh, I'm so sorry. My name is Gail Lombardi. I'm a Hampton Bays resident. And as I said to you the last time, I had my 15 minutes of fame because I was Lombardi V the town of Southampton where I prevailed in the lawsuit against the town of Southampton having the HPDOD annulled. And I became very familiar with the secret review, painfully familiar. So the first point I want to make, and why I think some of the other people are here, and I know this has gone on for years, which some of the other people here may not realize. We had Farrell Fritz come to the CAC meeting when I was part of the CAC before COVID to go over the site plan. So I think with COVID and with the changes in leadership of the Civic Association and Hampton Bays Citizens Advisory Committee, what was going on here wasn't very transparent, and there's no reflection on you all. It was just more a reflection on the citizens' leadership in Hampton Bays for a number of years, and COVID. So people here are not aware, or not fully aware, that CVS has been working on this for a long time. However, there are a lot of people that are concerned about the movie theater. And what I did, so this is my first point, is that what I passed around to you is the Corridor Strategic Plan. Back in 2012, when this was adopted by the town board, they called that section, they wanted that section to be a cinema square. That whole area was designed to, you know, back over a decade ago, for the town, and again, no reflection on this board, the town to be working towards having a cinema square in that area. It's not against CVS, it's not against you all, it's a little bit against our town board. They made no effort to do that with a lot of things available to them. So here we are now, people upset that we're losing the movie theater. So that's my first point. And at this point, I'm not sure what you could do about it, and, you know, CVS is sitting here very calmly, and I do understand their frustration because it's five years, four years? Four years. My second point is that the secret review, the traffic study that was conducted on page five, there's a conclusion that says, and again, forgive me, I'm going to read this slowly, based on the, based on the results of this study, more completely defined later, blah, 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 it says that there's no material adverse impact. I'm paraphrasing, I can't read my own notes. But that on page 25, it says that this result is based on the fact that there is no other development in the area, which is not true. You all know that there's liggits, you all know that there's that barn that's going up and being transferred, you're on 163 West Montauk Highway. So there's a lot of other development on Montauk Highway. And secret is very clear that you're supposed to look at the cumulative effect of any changes. So you're concluding, I think, a negative declaration, I think someone signed a negative declaration. I don't, I'm not saying you're not going to end up with the same results, I'm just not sure that you have all the information to end up with a negative declaration. So I think this board needs to look at that. And the third thing is very personal, third point I want to make, is that I do, I am a pedestrian. I stopped driving 12 years ago when I had a sudden vision loss, very traumatic, as my partner knows. But I am a pedestrian. I'm a New York City gal, and I'm a pedestrian. That, that whole section is very, from my observations and personal experience, is very unsafe. And it's, you know, reflection on CVS, that corner, the corner, the crosswalk on Springville Road on the south side of Springville Road, especially the location of the eastern crosswalk is, is hidden, and there's a left turn lane there. So between the CVS's left turn, movie theater's left turn lane, people going to Dunkin' Donuts, the Montauk Highway in and out of the movie theater, and the little narrow driveway, which I now understand is going to be cross-access to the Hamlet Green, I have to tell you, as a pedestrian, I carry my directives, you know, do not resuscitate, my partner being my, you know, it's a joke, but it's not. Because people looking to make a left turn, and they're not expecting a pedestrian. And somebody that's visually impaired, I am careful, but there's just so much I can do to be careful. So those are personal observations. So I don't know what you could do at this point. You know, they, I think they have somewhat of a right, as a right, to be there. You know, it's a business decision by the landlord. You guys are kind of stuck in the middle, but I'm hoping that maybe there could be some changes to the site plan, maybe make them a little safer. I doubt you could deny their application. And, you know, hold the town accountable in the future for not following their own master plan. Hopefully that'll be better in the future now that you guys are all aware of it, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for, thank you, Gail. Any other speakers for CVS at this time? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Dolores Riley. I live in Hampton Bays, and I love CVS. I just don't want CVS in Hampton Bays. And I do have a question. I am going to talk, but my question is, is this really a done deal, or is it still possible to stop this? Because I know that there's like, that old bank heading east from the main part of town. Seems like that would make a great CVS, but I really don't know. I am a member of a group from a subgroup from the Hampton Bay Civic Association. And one of the things that we talk, that they are talking about is trying to bring some sort of arts center or cultural center to Hampton Bays. We don't want to turn into West Hampton Beach, we don't want to turn into Seau Harbor, we love Hampton Bays as is, but we would like to see it brought up a little. And there's one other person, we have a subcommittee, we have two of us, who really, really, really want to keep the movie theater. I went there last night, and I got to see high-def opera.
Too close to the mic.
Too close to the mic. Oh, I always figure I'm too far away. Thank you. I went to the movie theater last night, and I got to see high-def opera, Metropolitan Opera. They have mystery movies, they have Tuesdays, they have all this stuff. They desperately want to stay where they are. And I know that there was talk about, we want to beautify Hampton Bays, and you have things nice and organized and looking fairly new and polished. One of the few big sections that seems to me like it's done or heading in that direction is where the movie theater is. Pool, pool place, I don't have a pool, I don't care about pools, but it's like these nice gray, this nice gray building, there's a Spanish deli there, there's the pizzeria, there's the wine store, I'm sure there's something else, and then there's the movie theater.
What?
Dunkin' Donuts.
Dunkin' Donuts, I knew there was something. And it just seems like this is not a great site. It's like, we need the movie theater, we need it desperately, and I'll end this, not right now, but I will end this by saying, is there any way to pick another spot? Because all the things that people talk about, about making Hampton Bays, yes, we have these wonderful beaches, yes, we have nice people, yes to this, and yes to that, and we have some great restaurants, but we don't have a lot of family-oriented things going on. We have that park, but it's not like, you know, other than going and putting your kids on the swing or going for a walk, there's really not much happening there. I've seen families go, and now they're, they're focusing a little more on movies in Spanish. We need this in this community, and I think it would be easier to relocate CVS to somewhere, and I swear, wherever you put it, I will be there. But the movie theater, we need it. I saw teenagers, it was mystery movie night. I try to go there at least once a week. Mystery movie night, there had to be 20 teenagers there, or maybe they were in their early twenties. It's like, other than that, driving around on your bicycle, staying at home and, you know, baking a cake or something, what is there for families and young people to do? It's the movie theater. So I guess I will end with my question. If you could just tell me, is there any way that CVS could be somewhere other than the movie theater?
Well, we, the town doesn't have control over where CVS is going to locate. It is permitted use. We can't tell CVS to go locate somewhere, we don't have that ability. You can talk to CVS, they've heard your, they've heard your concerns from the beginning. The movie theater unfortunately is, I mean, we had the, before COVID, we had the property owner here telling us the movie theater is out, they're, they're not renewing their lease, and I think they're on a month-to-month lease now.
Okay.
So we don't have that ability to, to direct specific businesses to specific locations. I wish we did.
And then is there like a timeframe at all that you're aware of?
After the close of this hearing, probably their approvals would be forthcoming in about the fall, you know, that there's a still review period, the engineers have to weigh in. It sounds like there's going to be some modification in the cross-access and so forth. So it's still a while before it gets finally.
And is there any way that the town would support moving the movie theater somewhere else?
Well, you could talk to town board members, as I say, they, they're probably as limited as we are.
Okay, I just thought I'd ask.
What I'd really like them to do is condemn that ice or that diner, and maybe do a
And build a new diner.
Or do some sort of community facility there, you know, welcome center or jitney bus stop, something.
Thank you. Any other speakers for tonight, or come on up?
Almost the same thing, but. Hi, I'm also a resident of Hampton Bays.
Welcome. Just say your name, please.
Patricia DeLuca.
Your name?
Patricia DeLuca.
Patricia DeLuca, right there.
Not related to Dean and DeLuca.
Okay.
But my concern is, I see that there's not much that we're going to be able to say about the CVS, although I'm happy to know that there'll be a CVS. I think we need another, you know, drugstore, like, other than Rite Aid. However, I don't like to think of being in that shopping center. But one of my concerns is, and I would think that it's also the concern of yours as well, is the amount of room and space we have in that small shopping center for the people who'll be going in and out. The movie theater, we don't have that traffic. It's always once in a while, and it comes and goes. But I can't imagine how that corner is going to be, if dangerous as it is right now, the shopping center is small, I can't imagine how, just for the, if you have any concern, and I think you would, I don't know who, that's what we should be concerned about, the people that are going to be going into and out of that place and who live in Hampton Bays, the traffic is unbearable now. That's my concern. I would love the movie theater, I would love to see us having a theater. It doesn't seem that that may be possible with the movie theater, but I think that, I think we need to think a little bit more, and I think CVS does too, of the concern of the people that are going to be moving in and out of that shopping center. That's my concern. Thank you.
Pat, just, you're aware that there's going to be a linkage to that parking lot behind Hamlet Green, which quite frankly is a very underutilized parking spot?
It is underused, but Springville Road is a lot of traffic, and a lot of traffic on Montauk Highway. It's, now it's starting now, but it'll be unbearable as the summer proceeds. I'm in town shores, so I'm about 10 minutes, I mean, I could get to the town in five minutes already.
Yeah.
But I can't get to the town in 20 minutes now. So I'm just saying, I think that that's a very big concern, and I think CVS should take that into consideration, too.
I think the thinking is, a certain amount of people are going to go through that Hamlet Green lot, get out to Good Ground, which is not an easy left turn, as you know, but to get to that Poncoa Light.
But just, that's more traffic.
Yeah, it is.
We're just talking about more people, more traffic, and we, it's, and CVS should have, I love going to CVS.
Yeah.
And it should have the proper place where we can enjoy going into CVS. And we're going to have to be battling traffic to do it, and it just seems like it's overloaded. That area is like, just overloaded, so that's what my concern is.
Your comments are well taken.
Thank you.
Ma'am, it's, we hear a lot of talk about traffic, we spend a lot of time on traffic, and it's, it's managing a very, very difficult thing that could never, ever be perfect, unfortunately.
No, but we have to eliminate what we, we have to keep things at a modest level.
But, but so, so you
Or try, anyway.
So you know, and everybody else in this room, obviously, that, you know, public safety, traffic concerns.
That's the biggest concern.
It's always, always right in front of us, always taken into consideration with every application.
A very nice area, Hampton Bays, but it's very congested in that spot.
It is, yeah.
From getting off at Sunrise Highway, 65, over, you know, and then look at where it is when you pass Poncoag Avenue, when you pass that, the St. Rosalese's, it's open space, the roads are wider, there's two buildings, two enormous buildings that are empty. So it would be nice if we could spread some stuff up there, then it would level it off a little bit better.
If I had my way, we'd all be on trolleys. We'd do way with the cars.
Right, that would be great. And that's another good idea. And thank you.
We have some more speakers? Are you going to speak? Great.
Hi, I'm Aleah McPhelan from Hampton Bays, and same subject matter. So behind me is an invisible line of a lot of people that are in agreement that we do not want a CVS to take over the movie theater, that we actually want the movie theater to stay there. Is there a possibility, if we get another company to take over that movie theater, that it would be allowed to just remain a movie theater plaza?
Of course, of course.
Okay. So I'm also asking CVS to check out the area by Macy's. There's a huge space there. Macy's is a huge parking lot, and it's not a traffic situation. So that traffic situation, which I go through because of where I live, at the movie theater every day, is always waiting for an accident to happen. So if you put a business like CVS there, it is absolutely going to probably triple that traffic area. It's, I know how much space is behind the Hamlet Green area, and yes, could it be utilized? But either way, you're increasing a very small space with an awful lot of traffic that's going to happen. And as much as maybe we could use a CVS, some this way, that way about it, there are other places, and I think that Macy's area, if it hasn't been looked into, would be a great place for a CVS. And thank you for your time, and
Thank you for your comments.
We're hoping for the movie theater to stay.
I am, too. I don't know if there's anyone else in the public we have. Charles, did you want to check the Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
There's no one on Zoom?
No.
Not for the movie theater.
Okay. As mentioned before, we're going to adjourn this to July 13th, which is, I know is a very busy time of year, but if you can get your friends and neighbors or other people to come down, they're certainly welcome. Those who can't are invited to send letters or emails. I can tell you, we read every letter, even the form letters, so we'd be happy to get your comments in by mail or email, and it's very important to get it into the record. So at this point then, council permission, we'll adjourn till July 13th. Thank you. Motion? Oh, do we have, are we going to do a motion? Yeah, I'm sorry, Tom on the motion, and George on the second.
All in favor.
All in favor.
All right.
Okay. Item two is iconic beverage, and George, are you going to be, do we have notice, counsel?
Yes, we do.
Very good. You're just going to read?
Yeah. Please take notice that in accordance with local law number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, May 25th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the site plan special exception application entitled iconic beverage. The application is to change from a wholesale pool supply business to a wholesale plywood and molding business in an existing building, the rare building, on a 77,607 square feet parcel, also improved with an existing beverage store, which is the front building, located in the highway business zoning district at 74 County Road 39, Hamlet of Tuckahoe, and partially in the Village of Southampton, Suffolk County Tax Map numbers 900-159-2-25.8 and 904-4-1-74.8. A transcript of said hearings will be provided at a later date, and the public will have an opportunity to see and hear the meeting live and to provide comments.
Very good. Welcome.
Hi, Matt Ivan, Suffolk Environmental for the applicant. Basically, George took everything I was going to say, so. So basically, we're here just for a change in tendency. The former business used to house a party supply store. Prior to that, it was a pool supply store, and now we're intending to make it a wholesale plywood and molding business. There's not going to be any manufacturing on the site, it's not going to be any construction to the site, there's not going to be any expansion of the use. It's basically, the parking is going to meet all requirements. I'm here with the owner, Tom Smith of Redtail Molding, and it'll work out, I'll see. And that's basically what we're here to do, just get a change in tendency from you guys.
What type of trucks do you use for delivering? Do you, is it mainly box trucks, or?
That would be your time.
Sure, please use a podium. And also state your name.
Hi, my name's Thomas Smith. The box trucks we use are Asusu cabovers. Material we sell is 16 feet long, so they're 18-foot truck bodies on top of, you know, a cabover, so you literally sit on top of the engine. They're small trucks, so we can maneuver in around job sites.
Okay. And when you have deliveries up west, what's the game plan?
I've got to send a truck.
You're not, you're not going to make a left out of there?
It's difficult. Yeah, and I've, I never understood why 35 on 39 until I had to get out of a parking lot on 39.
I think there's a prohibition, I think there's a prohibition to left turns out of that site. I've got to check the site plan, you might not even be able to make a left turn as one of the conditions. Okay.
And you know 35 and 39 is actually 45 and 39, right? 450.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, yeah.
It's hairy.
Yep.
So is it a combination of you folks taking orders and delivering, and people coming and picking up, or?
So the material, most of the material I sell is molding, some of it's plywood. Molding is 16 feet long, basically, and unless you have a truck, you really can't pick it up. It's not that it doesn't happen, but it doesn't happen. You know, it's
It'd be delivered.
It's delivered.
So it's not, no, like, you're not selling tools, you're not
No.
Nothing.
No, it's, you know, I'm putting wood on a truck, delivering it to the houses that are being built.
And no milling of the molding in the shops?
No milling.
Pre-purchase and pre, and just post-supply.
Yeah, it'd be crazy to make anything out here with the rent that this place has.
Just asking.
Yeah, no, there's, there's no manufacturing at all.
Good to know, Tom. Thanks for your comments. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on iconic beverage? Charles, anyone in the Zoom room?
No, sir.
Okay. Now, this is a public hearing. We'll entertain a motion to close with a 10-day written comment period.
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by George, all in favor? Aye opposed, extensions. We have four yes, three absent. Thanks for coming down. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
And the third application is Rothman Dynasty, and Tom, you're going to read for us? Do we have notice, counsel?
Please do.
Very good.
Please take notice that in accordance with local law number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, May 25th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the final application entitled Rothman Dynasty. The application proposes a two-lot subdivision of an 8.5 acre property which contains freshwater wetlands, situated in the CR8 zoning district, agricultural overlay district, and New York State archeological sensitive area, located 27 Lower Seven Ponds Road Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-113-2-1.2.
Very good. And I think, Daphne, you're going to present on, via Zoom? Are you, I think you have to hit your volume or microphone or your silence, maybe?
Unmute.
It might be unmute.
We're not hearing you.
Charles, is Daphne muted?
No, she's not, but I'm not getting any volume.
We're not getting any volume.
Cue card.
Can you turn up the volume on your computer?
Did you turn up volume on the computer? It's up. One second.
I'm not getting any volume.
Maybe the speaker
She's trying.
Maybe she's calling.
She said one second.
I think it was one minute.
Well, good, it can happen to Twitter, it can happen.
That's true.
As Charles said, maybe she tries calling in and saying.
Yeah.
Daphne, can you hear us? Can you hear us? Did you want to call in? Okay. Did you want to call it, call in, or?
She was trying on her other computer. Charles, do you see another, another one for Daphne?
Yes, she's coming.
It's trying on a laptop, okay.
Okay.
Hey.
Okay.
Woo-hoo. Bravo.
Sorry about that. Okay, sorry, I was trying a new camera. I guess it didn't work.
The camera worked great.
So you can hear me now?
Yes, loud and clear.
Right, okay. So, um, Daphne Vaughn, Service Garden Bar, National Planning for the Rothmans. Okay, so this is a two-lot subdivision for final application with an open space parcel. It's a CR80 zoning district. We have a cluster plan where we designed it to R40 zoning. The lot contains significant freshwater wetlands and fronts on Flax Pond. The lot number one contains an existing single-family residence that's been upgraded with an IA system, and it's 57,583 square feet. We're looking for a modified rear yard on that lot from 70 feet to 50 feet. Thank you, Charles. So that we can accommodate accessory structures more easily because of the layout of that lot. But Lot Two, which would be vacant, would be 59,977 square feet in the bulk area and would accommodate normal R40 stepbacks. There's an open space parcel that would contain all of the onsite wetlands as well as a majority of wetland buffer zones. That's comprised of 5.278 acres. The parcels themselves would also contain naturally vegetated wetland, non-disturbance-bound fertilization buffers. The existing developed lot would have an average buffer width of 75 feet, which is comparable to chapter 325 of the town code. And the vacant lot, Lot Two, would have 100-foot buffers overall. There's a common driveway easement on the south side of the property that would serve access to both properties from Lower Seven Ponds Road, but we're also proposing a secondary access from Seven Ponds Town Road to act as a, an escape route, I would call it, from the property, because this is, as all of you are probably aware, one of the major thoroughfares in the back roads where people and Lower Seven Ponds Road does get backed up at times. So we have proposed this outlet for the family to exit the property. We're subdividing this so that the Rothmans can have the second lot for their children. We did have an onsite meeting with the highway departments who did give us comments for the design of it. There is a drainage swale on Seven Ponds Town Road that we were sensitive to with our design. So there's a culvert that would go over that swale to access the roadway. What else? Oh, since it is an archeologically sensitive area, we did conduct a Phase 1A and Phase 1B archaeological study on the property that was submitted with our final application, and 45 shovel tests were done, and there was no significant artifacts or significant features that were encountered in that study. I think that's basically the project. Oh, we did just file a covenant amendment, so the board may be familiar with that. We did just discuss this recently, and this is part of the Watermill Land Corps subdivision from 1988. So the board did just recently approve the amending of the original covenant so that the lot could be officially subdivided.
Daphne, the open space is to be dedicated, correct, to the town?
Correct.
So the existing driveway on Lower Seven Ponds remains, and you would put in a second driveway?
No, I think.
The access would actually be relocated slightly to the east? Yes.
And the second.
Yeah, they're creating a new, new common driveway.
Seven to the other road. The second driveway.
You see this cross-hatched area?
Yeah. That's going to be the common driveway.
Right there, right where it's cursed, that's the new common driveway.
I just, the reference to a second access or something. Is it two dry, I'm just trying to figure out, is it two driveways or is it?
Well, there's one common driveway on Lower Seven, and then Jeff, could you scroll down a little bit? It's a second driveway in the upper part.
Yeah, it wraps around.
See, it wraps around that, that outer lot. See, see it? Right there.
Yes.
That's the second access.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So the existing driveway will probably be. So the existing driveway will be abandoned?
Yes.
On Louis Seven Pond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that has to be changed because of the design of the lots. It will basically hover over the two property lines.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Daphne? Thank you. Is anyone in the public who wishes to be heard? Please use the podium, state your name.
Good evening, guys. My name is Robert Winnicky. I am here representing my family, who owns the adjacent property on the other side, 96 Seven Ponds Town Road. Up the pond.
Across the, they're the other side of the pond.
Yeah, we own a little over a third of the pond.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I didn't, obviously, you guys have seen me before. I've been here on this matter before, and it's under a covenanted land. The covenant is now lifted, and I don't understand why we're lifting a covenant. Now, the property on the other side is now for sale. Are they going to be able to subdivide their property? I mean, we're, it's a beautiful little spot. It's actually one of the last kettle ponds, or one of the few kettle ponds in Southampton or in Long Island, meaning it's a spring-fed pond from underneath. And I would actually like to see the environmental study that was done, or was there? Because I've asked for it in the future, or in the past. And I just don't feel that any of our thoughts have been taken into this matter about not allowing this property to be subdivided and keeping it within the covenant to protect the property that surrounds our water.
Daphne, do you have any response to that?
Well, we had number, a number of public hearings before the board, and we had provided, you know, multiple maps before the board, and this map is a cluster plan that's providing open space, giving back all of the wetlands to the town for ownership. The lots are, actually, we did provide a standard map that shows that this is an R80 zoning district right now. And the standard map that we provided with our pre-application shows that we, we can meet 80,000-square-foot lots without the wetlands, which is why we were able to do this cluster plan and move forward with that, and that the board did move forward with entertaining this two-lot subdivision. And we're clustering it so that we can have a lower zoning district and dedicate as much of the property to the wetlands protection as possible by deeding the open space parcel with the wetlands to the town, and like I said, with the majority of the buffering area to the town, and also whatever buffer is not in the open space parcel is part of the actual lots. And the majority of those buffers that are within the lots are existing naturally vegetated areas that would remain. It's one additional residence on a, on a property that would be able to accommodate it, and the board did just approve the amendment to that 1988 covenant, and my office just filed that with the Suffolk County Clerk.
When exactly was it amended?
The covenant was amended about six months ago, right?
Was there another hearing that I was not notified of?
No, you were at the hearing.
Because we've been at every hearing.
We had a hearing to amend the covenant.
Yes.
You were here, you spoke to it.
Yes.
And then the hearing was closed.
And then we had another hearing, then another hearing, and a number of times we did ask for certain things, such as an environmental impact, which never was done.
Correct.
You know, and I'm really worried about them crossing over on the other side on the road there, even with the culvert. I mean, we have some wonderful, wonderful things that go on on our property. You know, we have turtles, we have, we have birds like you've never seen. It's a huge nesting area, and it also is, mostly actually on our side of the property, is very archaeologically sound. It is where they used to soak the flax, hence Flax Pond, for the water mill. These things need to be taken into consideration. And I mean, obviously, there's not much I'm going to be able to do at this point to change the fact that you are subdividing the property and changing the covenant. My problem, my biggest problem was, I don't think anybody from the original covenant was ever talked to about this. Like, there was no notification from the family or any of the family members who actually owned that covenant to be able to change it. But obviously, if it's done, it's done. There's not much we can do anymore.
That's correct. I think part of the thinking was, there was an intent to get this public, this wetlands and its pond, which is now in private ownership, into public ownership.
Right, understand, the reason we bought the property was because of.
Also be aware that this property could build another house there as of right, without a hearing or anything. Is, it's called a carriage house.
Correct.
So they could take the main house, they could just go to the building apartment and build a second residence on that house, and still keep the wetlands, on, on that property, and still keep the wetlands private, so.
But then they're not subdividing the property.
Correct.
So then there would still be one house with a family vibe, not two houses where one possibly could be sold.
Two houses on one parcel, yes.
Yeah.
That's what could take place now.
Right. But they want to subdivide the property, so if that's.
Before, right now, they can build two houses. After it's subdivided, they can build two houses.
I understand that. I understand that. So what was the reason that they wanted to subdivide?
Because to create a second lot.
You see.
But if, if, if it's a carriage house, the town is not going to get the wetlands. It's not going to get the pond. It's not going to be able to take down that horrible rickety fence that's, that's running along.
I know you live right down the road from me. I know. We've spoken, we've spoken.
I drive by every day.
Yeah. And yes, I put up a lot of yellow signs. Yes.
And they're all coming down.
Yeah, well, well, they have to go up, because like I said, people trespass on my property all the time during hunting season.
Yeah.
You know, especially since we have the duck right there. I get duck hunters that literally just walk down the, off the road now, because I let that, I had to get rid of the fence, and they literally go right into the pond. You know, shotguns right behind, now I'm a hunter, so I kind of love that property. It's supposed to be for us. Yeah, you know, and Phil Gay, of course. Yeah. He owns the duck blind over there. Yeah. So obviously, if there's not much we can do, can we at least look into the environmental impact of a culvert and change in the driveway? Please?
We've done that. The highway department was down there, as you know, there's that culvert and there'll be.
Well, I know what that culvert's for, is to keep the water from the farm field getting into our groundwater.
Yeah. So that any driveway that'll have to be constructed will have to be, this is actually going to be a plan drafted, where any driveway is going to have to have, you know, a reinforcement of the cul.
Well, well, I mean, I know the laws. You can't, I mean, it's all got to be bluestone, there can be no tar, there can be no, no chlorine in those pools. You know, these things have to just be looked at, please. Please, because this is, I want my grand, my grandkids to live on that property. I've been there just almost, we've owned it almost 30 years now. You know, and it's, it's our little oasis. So please protect us. That's all I'm really asking, because at this point, we can't change what's happening. So I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Definitely, and I'll see you guys around town.
Sounds good. Thank you.
The driveway plans are on file with the town engineer and have been under review with their office.
Yeah.
Also, my client is amenable to removal of that fence. I have spoken with them, and they would definitely like to.
It'll be required, it'll be required, Daphne.
Yes.
I've been waiting 30 years for that fence to come down. Can wait a little longer. Charles, anyone in the Zoom room?
No, sir.
Very good. This is a final hearing. We'll entertain a motion, close with a 10-day written comment period. Motion by Craig. Second by George, all in favor. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Thank you, Daphne, good seeing you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Motion to adjourn by George, second by Tom. We are adjourned.